Now is the time and place for a meeting of the Beaverton Planning Commission. For the record, I will do a roll call to verify which commission members are participating this evening. Commissioner Holmes.
Present.
Commissioner Lago.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner McCann.
Present.
Thank you. A special shout out to Commissioner McCann for doing a fantastic job over the last year's chair. Commissioner Speck.
Present.
And Commissioner Winter.
Yes, present.
Classic. The records show that Commissioner Ellis is absent and excused tonight. We are now at Commission Communications. Commission, any communications? It looks like no communications. Staff, any communications?
Good evening Chair Adams. I'm Anas Flotinsky, Planning Division Manager in Beaverton. I do have a couple of announcements. And these are just kind of general announcements from the city. One is to highlight that the city of Beaverton invites everyone to get inspired and involved all year long with arts happenings. There are a variety of events. And the latest issue of Your City that hit your mailboxes recently has an art map with a self-guided tour of public art in the community. You can also visit beaverton.org, excuse me, beavertonorgan.gov slash art for a mobile-friendly map with sculptures, murals, and more. And we also want to highlight a month of free happenings with the Beaverton City Library. There are a number of events associated with the One Book One Beaverton. This year's selection is The Seedkeeper by Diane Wilson. And it's usually really interesting to get involved in the Beaverton One Book One Beaverton books. There's lots of things where you can discuss the book with other Beaverton folks and do other things that are related to the book. And with that, I will just make one more comment before we dive into the agenda, which is to welcome our new Planning Commission members this year. Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Lago, and Commissioner Speck. We're so happy to have you here participating in the Beaverton Planning Commission. And today's agenda includes a work session, which is really informational and opportunity for you to participate in the planning process, ask questions, and get information about work that the city is doing. And then we'll have a Planning Commission training event later. So no need to actually vote on anything tonight. So it's kind of nice to ease into this year's meetings with something that is, in my opinion, kind of fun. So with that, I will turn my camera off and allow them.
Excellent. The first agenda item is a work session on the Designing Walkable Places project. The order of the work session tonight will be as follows. We will begin with a city staff presentation, followed by discussion and questions of staff by the commission. The Planning Commission will then hear public comments regarding the work session item. Individual comments will be limited to five minutes and must be directed toward the work session item. The commission will ask additional questions of individuals providing comments or staff. We will now begin with the staff presentation presented by Associate Planner Sarale Hickson. I hope I got pronunciation of your last name correct. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi.
You did it. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Sarale. We're changing things up a little bit. Sorry about the switcheroo chair. Sarale is going to be on in a moment. But I'm Brian Martin. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager for the city. And after the script went out, it occurred to me that we should probably introduce the projects. Especially because there's new commissioners tonight, kind of like to say like really quickly what's going on before we jump right in. So the Long Range Planning Team is part of the Planning Division. We actually work more on policy and development code updates and area plans for the city as opposed to the current planning folks who focus more on development review. And then the work session, as Anna said, is really to kind of tell you what we're thinking or what our ideas are and get your ideas, questions, and input on those. This project is many, kind of many things. But I think the one thing I should highlight is that it's a pretty short project. A lot of times when we come to the planning commission with a policy and code project, we'll come three or four times and kind of introduce the project and then talk about issues and different ideas. And this one, we have a grant from the state of Oregon where we have to give them the code and approval ready code in May. So we're doing it a little quicker. But tonight, that's the part tonight is introducing you to the project and our approach. Which, when we say approach, it's really, here's the ideas we have so far. They're not completely done. We don't have all the decisions made and all the rules written. It's really like a first look to get your ideas before we do a lot of, you know, a lot of the detailed work. So we're really looking forward to having the conversation tonight. Sarale is a new associate planner. She's been with us for most of the last calendar year and been working to get ready for tonight in getting the project in shape and doing the research and kind of preparing some proposals and questions. So she has both current planning and long-range planning experience at City of Russian and other places. So we're really excited to have her here and have all that knowledge applied to the project. So I will now get out of the way so Sarale can get the presentation started and benefit from all of your knowledge and experience. So thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for having me. And I'm gonna jump right in because Brian did all of the preamble. So thank you for being here tonight and giving us your wisdom and ideas on this project that I've been working on for a while, the Designing Walkable Places project. Tonight, I will introduce the project, go through some changes that we have identified that we think are pretty simple. Then we'll go into three big picture policy questions where we would really like some input from you. And then at the end, we will have time for questions and comments. However, because there's so much information, if the chair is okay with it, I would very much like to be able to pause at the end of each section and have the commissioners be able to give some feedback at that time. Is that okay, Chair?
That is completely acceptable, yes.
Thank you. The project goal is basically to be able to have code that makes it easy for vibrant centers to be created, areas where people live, work, and play in close proximity to each of those uses, all that are easily connected to other places that people may choose to live, work, or play. To do that, we want to increase the allowed density in places that have good transit service. We want to make it, have it be easier to get from place to place, which is not part of this project, but part of the transportation system plan project, which is really closely related. And to encourage a diversity of uses, a diversity of building types, and just to have more variation in what you see in an area where people can live in that area, work in that area, play in that area, and make a community. So, right, the reason we're doing it right now, it is in part because we have embarked on our new transportation system plan update. It's just at the beginning stages. But when we have, when we adopt our transportation system plan, we have to have made some changes to allow for walkable design in mixed-use areas. And we have some of it, but we really want to beef that up. So that was a requirement of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Executive Order and Legislation. And we also put very similar projects into our housing production strategy about increasing development flexibility in mixed-use and multi-dwelling areas. And also in looking at new ways to be able to get enough accessible units for our community. I put this slide up because while these are the keys, these are the key ideas for walkable places. I think it's also, I like using these images because it shows that the key things are the same wherever you are, but the context is important. So this shows places all around the world, but the key things are the same. The context makes it look different. So where are we talking about? We're talking about areas that were already zoned for commercial mixed-use and multiple-unit residential. We're not talking about downtown because the downtown planning has been done. We're not talking about the area that you see there in white, which is the area that was re-looked at with the Housing Options Project. So there's downtown. Here's Sunset. Here's Marshall's. We are looking at areas that were, as the, where the green is right now, they're zoned for commercial mixed-use and where that funky brown color is that is zoned for multiple units. We're using those because they already exist. Community said that that's what they want there. Also, we have to follow some of those state regulations that says that are climate-friendly. Our areas that we have to do the same are our Metro 2040 centers. That includes the downtown, which as I said, has already been done, but it includes Washington Square. These areas in yellow up here and here. So those are our regional and town centers, and those are the areas that we have to focus on. A lot of those areas are already developed. We're really looking at mostly standards for redevelopment. And this is a good example of how redevelopment can happen to make, in the ways that we have heard from the community that they really want to have those walkable areas, places to live, work, and play. I keep saying that. I'll stop. And you can see that this is standard mall-type development, lots and lots of parking lots. In the second side, a lot of those parking lots, there's still parking lots, but a lot of those parking lots have been used for other, it looks like, mixed-use development. And while a lot of the buildings remain, sometimes they're a little smaller, like in this area. This is a good example of the type of development that we would expect to happen in these areas going forward. The project has a lot of opportunities. It allows us to get more density. It allows us to get more variety in areas particularly with, that have good connectivity. It allows us to make the code more clear and objective, to have additional certainty for developers, which does make some projects more feasible. We can look at standards holistically rather than as lots of different standards. We can look and see what do we want and kind of retrofit out to get standards of what we want. And we can make sure that standards that we have are really aimed at a purpose and will meet that purpose. We're also going to look at, are there some uses that currently are not necessarily allowed next to each other that should be or vice versa? And we can start introducing some standards that respond to the change in our climate. So code exists right now that has some problems. There are also some potential problems if we don't pay attention to them as we're rewriting code. So examples of code issues that we have right now. Different standards interact in ways that make envisioned development impossible. If you have, blanking the example now, but we have lots of zones where either the density standard is very high and the floor area ratio is very low, or the floor area ratio is high, but the density is very low. There is a purpose for those zones, and we know what is supposed to be there, but the standards contradict each other and don't allow those things to happen. We also have a lot of uses that have to go through a conditional use permit. That is more time-consuming and often more costly. But it's also, when discretion is required, when judgment calls have to be made, it's not as predictable for people who are looking at doing things. And sometimes that, that in itself is enough to have them walk away because the costs don't, the upfront costs don't justify the risk. So those are things that we currently have an issue with. We know that building and street design have to work together to make people comfortable in the places that they are inhabiting and to make them designed for humans. This and the TSP will work together, the TSP on the public side and the right-of-way, so the sidewalks and the roads, and this one on the private side to make sure that they interact well with each other. Also, as we, as we potentially go away from having as many conditional uses, clear and objective standards, a lack of discretion, and a lack of discretion being required, can, if the standards aren't well-written, produce development that's monotonous? You'll see this in some places where you can go in and you can, at least as a planner, probably also as a planning commissioner, you can go in and you can see that they have design standards and you can see exactly what the design standards are because the development all looks the same throughout, all new development looks the same. We want to avoid that as much as possible. So that was my background. Quick pause. Anybody got any comments or questions right now?
So Staff Hickson, I have one question. So when, when we reach the conflict between cost and feasibility of the project, do we have plans in place to address that?
Was not expecting that one. So we are trying to, as much as possible, between bumping up the density and reducing certain types of standards and making them potentially permitted uses rather than conditional uses, we're hoping some of those costs will come down. Or if there are additional costs that happen, they're getting amortized over a much bigger development. I am gonna let Brian answer that as well because that was not a question I was expecting.
Yeah, Chair, Brian Martin again. It kind of depends on when, what your specific question is, when that collision is happening. I will say, sometimes like we have standards and people will tell us the project isn't feasible and they can't like make the project work with those standards because they are costing their money somehow. There are things built into the code that are usually available, like adjustments or variances or using a discretionary process rather than a standard to provide some flexibility to possibly, you know, if they're consistent with those processes and those rules, to adjust their projects or just, I guess, adjust our rules in a way, or like use a slightly different set of rules to avoid that. But some, you know, the, the standards and the guidelines and those adjustments are intended to be set up so we achieve the outcomes we want as a city. So there's usually, there's, sometimes there's a rub and you can't quite make it work. Kind of depends on what they want to do.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Chair Adams, may I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner McCann.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, removing, you know, I understand the idea of removing some of these steps which would save on cost for the developers, so maybe it helps them be more encouraged to build the project. But have you actually seen examples where that translates into actual cost savings down the line, say in rents and things? I mean, often when I'm working with developers, they kind of already have the target they're going for. So it's more about making the project pencil for them, not necessarily changing the outcome on the other end.
I can say, in my experience, we have had some developers, we meaning, prior jurisdictions. We've had some developers that, as soon as we said that would require a Type III, so that would require a hearing, they've gone, yeah, I don't want to do that, and basically backed away slowly. It's not an issue, it should not be an issue to have to go to planning commission. However, for some developers, it feels like it because different planning commissions work very differently. So that tends to be one of the bigger things is like they're just like, oh, I want to do that. And as opposed to the, any cost savings that happen from not having to go through quite as many steps being passed on to final users of the building.
Are there any concerns with attracting the sort of developers that, you know, would be turned away by having to do an extra step? I mean, are those, are those the sort of developers that you want to have?
It's a valid question. It's actually a really good question. And I have seen, I have seen some good developers who are feeling very shy after a bad planning commission experience in a particular place, who are just, they step back for a little while. They usually come back. And so it's just putting the development off, but.
Sarale, I could, yeah, I can, Anas Flotinsky here, I can address this specifically from Beaverton context and tell you that it's not abstract. We have developers that do work in Beaverton that see going to a hearing as being a risk for the project. And that's a risk that they are, will try really hard to avoid. And so the conversation about like, hey, Beaverton Planning Commission is not scary, doesn't make arbitrary decisions, et cetera. I invite you to take a look at hearings so you can see for yourself the kind of, the kind of professional approach to decision-making that the Beaverton Planning Commission has. That doesn't necessarily change their mind, but there are significant developments around Beaverton that have been built and that have not come to planning commission, and some of those is by a very deliberate attempt by those developers.
So I think we're ready to move on. So we'll go into the proposed simpler changes. These are changes that we identified when we went through the code, but also when we went through development history. We went through almost 10 years' worth of public engagement. We pulled out a lot of places where the community feels very strongly about something that is not necessarily recognized in our code or where there are rubs and sticking places. So the first thing that we want to do is update definitions for clarity, but also to make sure that all uses have definitions. And we also want to make sure that certain accessory uses are very clearly spelled out as part of those uses so that there are not questions down the road and staff are not having to write interpretation letters and stuff like that. Also, for the ease of staff and developers, we would like to standardize and simplify the use tables. There are currently, I believe, 80-something uses. We would not be reducing it that significantly, but it would be a good start. And, but also just having the tables so that they're the same in all of the different districts. So you know where to look for the type of use. We have three, we may have three different use types with three ever-so-slightly different definitions, depending on when the code was written across the different districts, and that does not help anybody. We also need to remove the requirement for discretionary use for housing within the Sunset area. State law says that we have to have a clear and objective path. We need to. Um, we need to, um, we would like to create, and this is something that we've definitely heard from the community, we'd like to create exemptions for replacement or modernization of renewable en- energy infrastructure, that's things like, um, parking lot charges, um, when new technology comes, just being able to take the old ones out, put new ones in without having to go through on-due process. Um, and then allowing for low-level type-one reviews to add renewable energy infrastructure into existing development. There are also some changes that, um, that are needed to reflect either policies in our comprehensive plan or state requirements. Um, for example, all of the town centers need to have adopted, all of the town centers within metro need to have adopted boundaries. Um, and we have not adopted the Sunset Transit, uh, Town Center Boundary, we do have a Sunset Transit, we do have a Sunset Transit Station Community Boundary, let's make them the same thing. We also, there's also a few little tweaks here and there that the Climate-Friendly and Equitable Communities Code requires things like changing in bike parking, maybe some changes to bike parking standards or drive-through standards. And those are clearly spelled out in the C F E C legislation, so just get those out of the way. Um, also, we do need to have a mechanism for low-car district. This, it, uh, staff went through the process and it would appear that this is much better to take care of as part of the Transportation System Plan Update, you will be hearing more about this in the years to come. Um, and we also want to add in some development code requirements for shade and other weather protection in certain circumstances. So, any questions on those?
I've got a quick question, Staff Hickson. What does adoption of the metro boundaries look like for the city of Beaverton?
So most of our boundaries are adopted. The only one that is not is Sunset. And, um, we do have a Sunset Boundary adopted. As one thing, it needs to be two things apparently, and it's a fairly, it looks like a fairly pain, painless process. Um, Brian has been working with the County Metro on that.
Yeah, the, the short answer is, but we'll have the, this, we'll ask the council to adopt the boundary. Uh, it won't really have much of an effect on the development rules uh, in the short term, um, but it'll satisfy the state requirement. And then we can kind of figure out later how to incorporate that into the coplan.
Okay, but that doesn't mean like, I'm just, so adopting the metro boundary doesn't mean that we're taking care of that area, is that correct?
Well, so the uh, the good portion of that area is already inside the city, uh, some of it's not because of our boundaries are strange, um, but, uh, so we'll be adopting the the boundary that sort of, uh, formalizes the metro twenty forty growth concept of like having different centers in different locations around the region. Um, so it's, it's a, at the moment, it's a very technical, like comply with state law, make sure we have a boundary that everybody knows about. Um, but on the ground, it's not going to make a lot of difference in the short term. Uh, we'll have to decide later if we, when we, like, if we're going to update the coplan, if we want to incorporate that in some different way, but uh, right now, it's a very, like, just tiny technical thing.
Thank you, Staff Martin. Any other commissioners have any questions? Questions?
Well, this brings us to the first of the policy questions, um, where we really do want you to weigh in, we have come up with a concept um, for how to regulate intensity, but, um, we have come up with a concept, it is not baked in, um, and we would like some input on that concept. So I'm gonna step way, the quest, the big picture question is how should development intensity be regulated to increase development flexibility and capacity in multi-falling and multiple use districts? Um, I'm gonna step way, way back to really high level. Um, let's go over some concepts because we're going to, the concept that Staff has come up with is to do with floor area ratio, and we want to make sure that all of the concepts are in everybody's mind. So, I'm not coming back to this. So there are lots of different ways of regulating intensity. Um, we currently use pretty much all of them, um, if, at the same time. Uh, occasionally, one or another is missing, but we use a lot of these all at the same time. There's density, floor area ratio, building height, lot sizes and dimensions, um, setbacks, lot coverage, open space and buffers, and not all of these are designed to regulate intensity, but all of these can regulate intensity. For example, setbacks, um, the diagram on the street shows what is a, what ends up being a building envelope, you're regulating the intensity, um, so each of the setbacks, you have to stay out of each of the setbacks, so you end up with an envelope where you can build. This is single-family homes, which would not be being built in any of these areas, but it's, it's the simplest drawing I could find. So you are saying if this is the gra- if this is the floor area that can be done, and you have, for example, an upper limit on floor area or, um, and on, or, um, other things like that, or building height, you're limiting the amount of development that can happen. Um, so for to make sure everybody's on board, um, density, density is a number of units per acre, it's how many residential units you can put in an acre, it's a pretty simple calculation. Um, they look different in different contexts, but that's the basics of it. Floor area ratio, at first glance, seems a little more complicated, but it's really not, it's a measurement of bulk. So it is a ratio of how much floor area of a building, so that's adding up all the floors of the building. Um, there can be on a site, um, in relation to the size of the site. So you can see here that different floor area ratios can look very, very different on the site, this is where we're uh, this, this is the kind of thing that can definitely increase flexibility for what can be built. Um, so this is, this one's floor area ratio, you can see over here, you may recognize these two buildings, they are fairly local. Um, although they are on the other side of River to Beavon. Um, this is what a floor area ratio, a floor area ratio, four can look, four point one can look like, this is actually seven point seven, which is higher than anything that we're thinking about. Um, even despite these, these large floor area differences and also the number of differences in stories, they still work well together, they do not, neither of them seems out of scale with the other. So the concept that we have come up with is that the areas, areas are denser when they're closer to frequent transit. Um, I'm, this map here, again, this is downtown in the middle, Sunset up here, my shoulders here, nature park here. Um, these are, the, the deeper the color, the more intense, so there's a deep blue and a light blue, and I'm sorry that it doesn't show up on the screen that way. Um, there is a deep orange and there's a lighter orange. Uh, the deeper, uh, there's also gray and, um, little patches of gray, which I will get into. Um, so what we're seeing is for all of the blue and orange areas, um, a mix of uses will be allowed with commercial and residential, but the focus would be, one of them would be, uh, the blue would be primarily commercial, the orange would be primarily residential. Um, and then there are these little pockets of green are areas that are currently zoned neighborhood service, and they are small-scale commercial areas in the middle, generally in the middle of residential areas. Those are the little service centers, um, that can help a, a community like that um, have, not have to travel too far. Uh, the gray areas are in, are actually flex industrial commercial zones. Um, and they are generally, I think this one's Milken. Um, and then we've got Almonica and oh, can't remember the name of the other one up here. Um, and they are areas that they generally look a little more industrial, but they do have a combination of uses in them, so they're show mixed use, they don't usually have the residential in there. And those ones are, was specifically designed to make sure that employment could be next to those frequent transit areas, and as such, really need to stay there, um, big picture employers, um, and, uh, big picture employers have a lot of people coming and going, and for them to be able to do so with transit is important. So, um, this next section is going to crib quite a bit from, uh, work that the state has been doing. Um, they have a working group that's been working on what walkable places looks like and creating a model code for, um, cities that need the help to be able to, um, adopt to meet those C F E C requirements, um, so the, the, the names that we're using here come from the state, they're probably not the names that we would, uh, end up with, but for ease of use, that's what we're using. So, um, there, I'm gonna go into the map and these typologies in more detail in just a minute. So major centers, this is basically Sunset for us. Um, if, if we had not already done downtown, downtown would also be considered a major center, but it was just rezoned and looks, this, the code looks much better, um, than for these areas currently. So you're really looking at, um, residential above commercial here, um, they tend to be medium to high-rise. Um, they are, that, you see a lot of these in areas throughout metro, uh, in places throughout metro area, you've all probably been in one of these even. Um, then we have car-dog mixed use, which is not the same as our zoning car-dog mixed use. Um, and it is, again, residential above commercial, but this is less, uh, this is, um, with good transit, um, these are areas with good transit, they're on frequent, they're on frequent service routes, so these are places that have buses or trains coming every fifteen minutes or less for most of the day. Um, they are, they are generally, um, commercial and modern. They are, you, you see them everywhere, there's lots of different sites. So I moved everything around. Um, also in those areas that are close into transit are the areas that were, that have been, um, residential zones. And for that residential use, we're really looking at something that the state calls modern apartments. They, um, it, it doesn't have to be a modern, a modernistic style, uh, that is an architectural term as well, and it doesn't have to be that architectural term. Um, it's just about the way the use works. So lots of residential, the corners possibly have some commercial in them, or maybe there's daycare inside or something like that. Um, so small service-type things usually in with the residential. Um, so going back to things that were generally commercial or mixed-use commercial before, but this time further away from those frequent transit lines, uh, that would be Main Street Mixed Use. Um, these are on, um, these are on car doors that have decent car access, but don't necessarily have the transit access at this point in time, that does not mean that they will not get the transit access. The more people they get, and the better, better the transit access will be eventually. These are small-scale buildings, they're like three-four stories. Um, and they generally, um, they're generally di- just like the car-dog mixed use was, but on a smaller scale, a little less intense, um, often mall lines get these. Um, and these ones are more likely to have parking. Um, the residential stuff that is further away from transit, um, is the typology given by the state is Main Street Neighborhood. Um, this is often stacked flats, walk-ups, again, they're two, three stories tall. They are definitely more likely to have parking involved with them because these are areas where you kind of need a car. Um, so those are, that's what we're looking at for residential there, in terms of the commercial there, you would be looking at, um, uses that either you would look at not just the uses that were allowed in other, in the more dense areas, you'd also be looking at possibly allowing extra uses that are car-related or car-centric because the neighborhoods at this point in time are also car-centric. You want those services as close to the people that need them as possible. Um, so that was that section. It was a lot of information, um, hopefully it all made sense. Any questions?
I have, I have something quickly to add, sorry. I apologize if I missed it, um, but it was a while ago anyway, so I just, I'll just reiterate it if, if everybody else heard it already. That, one of the major ideas that we're interested in is um, shifting from having building height and going to more of a floor area maximum. So we're just saying like, this is the bulk of a building that you can have, whether it's, uh, kind of short and uh, spread out, or tall and skinny, or two buildings that are kind of medium. Um, you, you know, you get that much floor area, and the, one of the benefits of doing that is, especially for residential, when you're using units per acre, it limits a little bit, wh- well, how many units people can get in there. And so you, sometimes you would prevent someone from doing, um, more studio apartments that might be needed by people who live alone, or maybe have a, a little bit lower income. Um, and, um, it also gives you the flexibility because you have, if we give you more bulk to have apartments with multiple bedrooms, if you want to, if you want to have, uh, larger households. Um, so, um, that's the reason we're interested in your opinion on shifting to kind of having a different bulk size in different locations in the city, but generally more bulk allowed without maybe with not as many overlapping, uh, requirements for the height and F A R and this and that, but like, but, uh, leaning on that, uh, maximum F A R tool. Did I get that right, Sarley?
Y- you did, and I don't know where, I, I, I don't know how I managed to take that out of the presentation, but apparently it is. So basically, you would be looking at, um, maximum floor. Oh, you know what, I went, I went quick, that's where it is, that's where it is, this, this slide here. And so, yeah, we'd be looking at regulating the top end of development through the use of maximum floor area ratio, and also, um, the use, requiring certain amounts of open space. Um, and then we would be looking at regulating the bottom end of development, so you you can go no lower than this with minimum density for residential-only developments and minimum floor area ratio um, for everything else. Um, we're also looking at regulating, um, certain things about the buildings, such as it needs to be close to the street for a good proportion of its street usage, or, um, other standards that are really designed to make sure that even if the buildings get tall, that human-scale area still feels friendly and comfortable, so like windows and that kind of stuff. I apologize for that, I said I was gonna come back to it and then I forgot.
Chair, I think folks are waiting for you to call on them on their research, just so you know. Commissioner McCann's got her in.
Now I see, now I see Commissioner McCann.
I think, I think Chair, Chair Adams has just like blocked me off his screen, so he can't see me.
I have, I have, you brought that, but it's like delayed, it's delayed.
Um, so personally, I, I, I mean, to the question of, do we have cons- do we have concerns with F A R as the guideline, I think personally, I, I don't, I think it does provide some flexibility, which leads me to just ask about this question about minimum amounts of open space, because I think that gets into sort of the different Which leads me to just ask about this question about minimum amounts of open space, because I think that gets into sort of the difference between dense. You know, we're talking about density and walkability, but there's also the aspect of livability. And sort of making these nice spaces. So, um, I'm curious if you've really dug into what. You know, you're saying that you wanna think about minimum amounts of open space. Is that something you've dug into at this point? Uh, or is that kind of something you're gonna be working on in the coming months?
Where it. It's something I'm gonna be working on in the coming, coming months, and we've done some work on it. Um, so we're really looking at um, having as much as possible. Um, paying attention to that context. So, um. There are areas that to be livable need more open space. There are areas that do not. Um, because there is adequate open space around them. If you're right next to a park, do you really need to have? A lot of your lot taken up with enough parks. Um, you might, I don't know, but, um. We are also asking some questions about that and what open space should look like to the community. Um, there's a survey out, I'll get into this at the very end of the presentation, but there's this, a community survey that just went out. Um, yesterday. And there's also a community meeting happening where we're gonna be asking people a lot more questions about that kind of. Designy and livability aspect of it, rather than just the straight up. Here's, here's the big picture bulk kind of questions.
Okay, yeah, um, I mean, I'd be curious about, or. I don't know, a thought that I have, I suppose, is, is what I should say, is, is maybe as you're thinking about that more, is thinking about. You know, to that end, um, not just amount of open space, but maybe type. Of open space and, and kind of a little more guideline, because I think we see a lot of projects come through. Where they're technically meeting the right square footage, but what they're really creating is sort of useless. Strips of lawn. You know, don't really amount to like quality space, um, where, where even a smaller open space that was more usable. Would actually be more beneficial for kind of the quality and experience, um. In the community. So, so kind of thinking about that sort of as well. And then I absolutely agree that. Different areas should have different considerations.
Um, it's a really great point. Thank you for bringing it up and um, reminding me that I do need to dig more into that. Um, there's also, this is a really short project, and there may be some things where we can't get all the way there. At this point in time, um.
Sure.
I'm, I, when I was going through and scoping, um, because my project scope was very large in my head. And then it had to become reasonable in the amount of time. Um, when I was going through and scoping, the, um. One of the things that it's like, if we have the open space there, we can figure out what to do with it. If we don't have the open space there, you can't actually put it back. Um, so, uh, but I definitely have some, um, thoughts. About, some thoughts of my own and will be very interested to see what everybody else has to come up with about. What makes a good open space.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioning questions? I don't see any other questions. Steph Hickson.
So the next thing that we're gonna talk about is uses and, and. Uh. Should we allow, should certain uses be allowed outright around through a conditional use permit? So again, to go back to that really high level. There are uses that are just allowed and whatever development happens, maybe it needs a design review, maybe it needs whatever it is. But the use itself is outright and allowed in the zone. There are also areas, uh, there are also uses that are conditional uses. Which means that they're allowed, but certain conditions have to be put on them to make them more compatible with what is around them and to prevent. Um, negative impacts on what's around them. Um. And, um, there are a lot of things that are listed as conditional in these zones, a lot, lot. Um, including, for example, in areas that allow. Um, that allow all kinds of retail, um, service work, all of those kinds of things that. Make a medical clinic be conditional. Is there much difference in the impact of a medical clinic to. A hair salon or dentist's office or whatever, I mean, some of them can be really, really close. Um, and. Those, allowing those outright in areas that allow other commercial uses. Seems to make a lot of sense. Um. There are some where possibly small scale uses would be, um. Similar in, in impact to, um, a commercial use. But large scale ones may need conditions put around them. That's something else that we can do. We can regulate that based on scale. And there are some where, yeah, maybe it's allowed in some areas and in other areas, um. Maybe that's not an appropriate use, um, because it, uh, an appropriate use without conditions. They're all, it's, it's, it's an allowed use there. It's just whether it's allowed. With a conditional use permit and conditions put on it that regulate time manner or place. Or if it is in an, or if it's just, yeah, the use is allowed, we're just gonna look at your building inside. Um, so, um, these are some of them. They are certainly not all of them. So major animal care would be animal care that includes having animals outside. Uh, childcare and daycare, um, I think that's pretty obvious. Medical clinics are exactly what they sound like. Meeting facilities are not defined. Public buildings are defined. Those are things like. Fire stations, um, playstations, um, libraries, those kinds of things. Um, residential care facilities, again, pretty much what they sound like. That's elderly housing. Um, and other things of that ilk. Social organizations, I don't believe is a la- is, is well defined. Um, when I say we need definitions, this is why. Um, and, um. Utility substations, that's another one where maybe small scale is good, large scale, might need some conditions put on it. Um, so. So when we talk about conditional uses and why they might be problematic, um. A, a non, in an outright use can be processed through a type two, through staff review. Um, that means an application comes in, staff looks at it, says, yep, we've got all the information we need and. Sends notice out to the shrouding areas, um, and makes a decision. Um, it's a very. Uh, the standards for this mean that they have to be clear and objective. It has to be somebody that anybody with a certain amount of professional scale. Can look at and go, yeah, that's exactly what that is. Boom, 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 check boxes. Um, and that is a much more predictable. Um, and oftentimes shorter process. Um. The type three, the ones that require public hearings, which is what a conditional use is, um. That has the public notice, but it's a public hearing. Um, there's discretion involved. It requires the use of. A lot more judgment. Um, there's a lot of judgment call about, you know, how is the community at whole, as a whole, gonna be impacted by this? Um, and those can be tricky and there is not necessarily a predictable outcome to those. Usually there is, but occasionally it can be a, it can be a little less predictable. Which can be a problem for, um, certain circumstances. So that's where that one is. Um, I think that was a quick one. Yep, that's a quick one. Any questions on those? Or comments, actually.
All right, I have more questions.
Yay. I love a good question.
Oh, a couple of questions. Um, one, in your memo, you also listed temporary housing, meaning like hotels, motels. Et cetera. Is that still under consideration? It's not in your presentation. So did that get?
I, I run out of space.
Oh.
It didn't.
On the slide.
It didn't. I mean, it is also a more, a slightly more complicated one. That might be one where, um, one of the options I didn't go into was there are things where. If we just put a couple of standards on it, um, we can not, we can no longer necessitate the use of conditional use. Of the conditional use permit. So if we put a couple of standards around it that are to do with the time manner or place. Then we may be able to, um, deal with those potential negative impacts without having to go through a conditional use permit. Um, and that might be one of those. There may be some that are fine and some that are not. Um, but yeah, any comments you have on that particular one are.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, that was one, there's a couple of these that jumped out at me, kind of to your point, is. Is you have this category and it seems like you look at what's in that category and it's like. You know, it looks fine, looks fine, looks fine. And then you get to one, you're like, hmm, maybe, mm, maybe that one's tricky. So. Um, things like motels where we're talking about like a lot of vehicular traffic, usually big parking, you know, kind of. To support a use like that seems counter to what you're trying to do here and, and maybe. Requires more. Uh, more of a review, right? So, so that's sort of where I had a little bit of a question mark on that one. Um. Similarly, uh, but for different reasons, the utilities. Um, we've certainly seen projects come through that ultimately. Met the letter of the code, but frankly are, have been built are, you know, there's one. Um, that I know we've looked at on, uh, Hall and, uh, Olson. That is in a really prominent location. It's really a dead use. Um, it's, it's a big. Infrastructure right on a corner. It, it really create, it's kind of creates some visibility issues for the sidewalk and for, but, you know, as a pedestrian goes through that area. Technically, they met all the rules, but frankly, maybe should have had a little more pushback, right? So things like that, but again, it's kind of a dead use. It doesn't actually benefit this sort of walkable. Situation. Um, however, I understand that you need those utilities, you need that infrastructure, but that's another one that maybe needs a little more. Oversight on, on what you're gonna get, so you don't end up with just a C M U block hut. Stuck on the corner of, of a prominent urban block, right? Um, you know, you really wanna think through some of these and kind of what's that worst case scenario. I think. And this is maybe me just heading into like the black hole of weird scenarios, but, um. Like social organizations, I would think for the most part, that's probably fine, but I mean, are there other oversights? If they are a social organization that is of a type that is. Maybe. Questionable in terms of their, their kind of how they see others, or you know, I mean, you can just see like there are some groups. That are technically social organizations, but maybe are, are sort of based on hate or other things that you wouldn't necessarily want to. Now there's no oversight to what they're putting in. Maybe, maybe we can't even regulate that. I don't know, but.
The First Amendment is kind of a thing. But there are certainly, um, there's any regulations we can put in about how they do business. Um, that may help with some of that. Um, so it, yeah, Brian.
Yeah, Commissioner McCann, thank you. Um, those are really helpful comments. Couple of thoughts that I had that, you know, probably we can file this under, like, we'll see you later. Because then we'll have more time to work on it and propose things. Uh, but you're getting, you're getting good thoughts into our brains. Um. Some of the things might be taken care of by other standards. So we have standards about. Making sure you have enough building on the lot, so we don't like just waste space. Uh, we have standards for. What it looks like on the street and what materials you can use sometimes, whether there's windows or not. So like it might not be a, might be an attractive building. Even if it's dead. Um, this isn't necessarily solving everything, but it prevents some of the, like, some of the, uh, worst cases. Um, beyond that, if you, if there's still scenarios that you could imagine or are reasonable that could, could get through. Um, it's the, uh. We have the option to use size triggers or sort of, uh, fit characteristic triggers. To kick them into conditional uses. So like the motel one was an interesting example. You know, you could say if your parking lot is over a certain size. Or a certain percentage of the lot or a certain number of spaces, then you go into a conditional use because there's obvious impacts and it's kind of like. Not consistent with what we're trying to do in that district. Uh, the minimum F A R also might help, but you know, like, um, that's, that's our other option. And then the third option is just to leave it as a conditional use. So lots of, I just wanted to say like, there's lots of good. Uh, there's lots of good content in what you, what you said and what your questions were and like, we can think about those different buckets as we go through.
Yeah, and I think that's really all I'm saying is that, that I, I understand the desire to maybe create a less cumbersome process. For some of these types, but keeping in mind what, what you might get. And that making sure that that's really ultimately leading you toward the goal, not just simply, we're just gonna make it. Easier for some people so they can develop something for development sake. Like you want, you want the, the incentive. To actually lead you to the goal.
Great, yeah, thank you. We'll take our shot and show it to you next time. Thanks.
Any other commissioning questions for Steph Hickson?
Yeah, I had, this is an observation and I think it could, it could go back to, um, F A R as well as, um. Providing more avenues for, um, not having to go through conditional review. And I know this, um, document is being. Uh, produced, uh, parallel to the transportation system plan. And I would say, uh, street typology. Even though you have one that's a public realm and you have one that's a private realm. Maybe there's a, maybe you, in terms of controlling what happens on certain properties. There's a definition associated with the type of, um, street frontage it's on, whether it's a local street, whether it's a connector street or an arterial. And that might also tie back to F A R and then required open space requ- um, for particular sites. Obviously, if it's an arterial, it's probably more of an urban environment, which you're gonna have a building frontage. As opposed to when you go down to the smaller scale streets where you, it, it, it's probably a little more likely that you're gonna want some more open space in, in those areas.
Great thoughts.
Thanks, Commissioner Haskback.
I was also just curious, like, on, especially the ones that you're wanting to potentially change to outright acceptable. Is there a history of planning commission conversations in the last five, ten years or anything that. These have been super smooth and there hasn't been an issue, or has there been ones that like have drawn any flags? I'm just curious, like. Sometimes it's like there was a reason why these were pushed to this level, so is there. History that shows that why we would want to pull them back or why they might need to stay?
I'm gonna tip the back question to people who have been around the city for a little longer, maybe.
I will, uh, I'll, I'll wade in here. Um, a lot of the. Um, uses that are identified as conditional, as well as many other parts of our code, have actually been in place for a very, very long time. Sometimes that, um, legislative record. Um, includes specific information about why a particular use was determined to require a conditional use review. And sometimes that legislative record does not have that information. Um, so I would just kind of note at first that. Um, uh, sometimes there, what's in the code now is simply a legacy of things that are very far in the past or assumptions that were made. Um, that are, that are, um, uh, multiple decades old. In general, what I will say is that the idea of a use being conditional is that the use in general would be. Believed to be appropriate for a particular area, but that, but that use might potentially have impacts. That need to be addressed in a, um, case by case manner, um, and with the use of discretion. Another characteristic of our conditional use land use application is that. The approval criteria and for new, for, for the new planning commissioners, we've talked about approval criteria in our orientation back in December. But approval criteria, just to recap, are the things that inform the decision. That is made to approve or deny a particular application. For conditional use applications, the approval criteria. Are very, very broad and discretionary. They're extremely open ended. And that is one of the things that makes them difficult decisions to make and makes them pretty uncertain for applicants. So the question that. We ask as staff when we're looking at these and saying, all right, how do we? how do we, how how can we think about um, and kind of frame decisions about whether particular use um, maybe should continue being conditional or maybe maybe could be considered to no longer be conditional and be permitted outright? Um, is, is, do we actually think that there are potential impacts for these uses in these circumstances? Um, that would need that kind of case by case tailored assessment? And is the conditional use land use application the right review? So um, conditional uses, when they come for review, may also still be subject to design review. In fact, they typically would be also subject to design review, um, which is intended to address really the physical characteristics um, of a um, of a a building in sight. Um, but that also design review can be a way of addressing things like uh, transportation, parking standards, et cetera. Um, the um, the types of impacts that might rise to the level where um, we really do maybe wanna hang on to that conditional use review or where we think there might be these these kind of impacts that would need to be assessed on a case by case basis. So I guess that that's maybe a long winded way of providing some additional context. In terms of whether there have been um, specific cases that would be driving this, I think the only thing that I would identify um, at this point, well, I would, I would identify um, I would identify a couple. One of them is that um, the review for medical clinics, um, in my opinion, is is probably um, a- among those that is probably unnecessarily onerous and and in a, in a relatively clear way. Um, the um, things like residential care facilities are sometimes quite controversial among neighbors. Um, but perhaps from staff's perspective, may not necessarily come with the kind of impacts that the neighborhood imagines. Um, we did have a case recently, which was controversial, which was regarding a childcare facility in a residential zone. Um, that ended up being um, appealed to council. So that's one example of some controversy that was associated with the conditional use application. So there's really a wide variety of circumstances, um, which is why we need to, we need to talk about it. We need to get feedback from planning commission. We're also getting feedback from council, um, and we'll kind of take that feedback in and um, digest it, come back with some ideas for um, for addressing these with a proposal and and give feedback on that as well. I hope that was helpful.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Ann.
Looks like no more additional questions. Steph Hickson?
Right. I'm getting the, um, the next one is, and then on the last one that we have big questions over. Um, and we really just want, we're filling this one out, um, we really wanna hear um, as many, as many ideas as you have on this one, um, is accessible housing. And um, the question is, how do we get more accessible housing? Um, there are a number of knowns and unknowns about accessible housing within Viva, but also just generally um, throughout at least metro region. Is we don't know how many or where the existing units are. Um, we do know that there aren't enough because people can't find them. Um, but we don't know exactly what is there. We also know that based on our housing needs analysis from a couple of years ago, um, we will need a lot of new accessible housing. Um, twelve percent of all of the additional housing that we need will need to be accessible in order to meet the needs of our elderly and disabled populations. Um, we also know that building code does have a requirement for um, what is referred to as a type A unit. If it's a large enough building, so twenty units um, for the buildings, then they, at least two percent of them need to be type A units. A type A unit is built to be adaptable. Um, so the door frames are wide enough for um, for wheelchairs. But they don't necessarily have the grab rails, they don't necessarily have the lowered counters. They don't necessarily have those things that are needed, but they're built to be able to be, to have the infrastructure to have that happen on a fairly easy basis. Um, there's also a type B unit um, which if housing is built using federal dollars, then they have to provide type B units. It's a very minimal level of accessibility, it's less than that type A converted, adaptable. Um, but there is a certain amount that has to be built there. Um, so we, we have a need for it. Our housing production strategy said that we were going to try and find ways to either mandate or incentivize um, additional accessible housing. Um, the options that we have right now, and council will be making some decisions on this and giving us some direction. But we'd love to be able to give your input um, when they make those decisions. Um, do we want to mandate accessible housing? Um, do we wanna say if you're using, if you're building something over a particular size, a larger development, you need to put something extra in? Um, do we want to uh, say that needs, that's a big enough issue that it needs to be a separate project? Um, can't be done in this short timeframe? And maybe we wanna look at incentives instead of mandates? Or do, should we just be looking at a different way to get this accessible housing? Because incentives and mandates are not the right way, um, given the current situation. So um, those are council's questions. We would like your thoughts, consensus, um, feelings and recommendations to take back to them.
I've got a a question slash comment, I guess, uh.
Commissioner Martin?
Uh, thank you, Chair Adams. My my kind of uh, thought on this, uh, like ideally, this is a great idea. We need to make housing more accessible, but as you stated, like, the developers are the ones that have that onus because of the funding. Is there any sort of like uh, evidence that shows that when we force these developers, like in terms of mandating this, housing is affected in one way or another? Or do we have evidence of like previous times where we have tried to incentivize uh, building people to make housing more accessible and whether that has worked or not? Just cuz I feel like, how I said earlier, you know, my gut reaction is yes, accessible housing. But our decision is not necessarily made in a vacuum. So I kind of wanna see if we have a reference as to how something similar has affected uh, housing in the past.
Fabulous point. Um, the first thing is the uh, generally, the the first thing that is said about accessible housing is that it will make development more expensive. And so I went looking for evidence of that. Um, and there is some evidence that it can be significantly more expensive. It can be not that much more expensive. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of consensus on what, what makes that change? Which way is it? Um, how uh, accessibility advocates and housing advocates tend to be saying it's not that much more expensive. Um, developers of market rate housing tend to be saying it's a lot more expensive. Um, so one of the things that um, we would be doing if we're going down this route is to check in with people who have built accessible housing, who specialize in building accessible housing. How does that work for them? Um, how much more expensive actually is it? Because these are people who really wanna do it, so when is the breakpoint? Um, there would be, we would also need to talk to other people who are invested in the process, whether they are disability advocates, um, whether they are housing service providers or housing providers or developers. We didn't just talk to a lot of people. Um, I will say that the new accessibility requirements that went into place in Portland, um, the specific language um, said that it kicked in at buildings that have fifteen units. So they're now building fourteen unit buildings. Um, so I don't think it had much impact on how much accessible housing was being built. Um, there are ways, obviously, it's about the language itself, uh, when it comes to those things. Incentives, I found a lot less evidence about. I found a lot of opinion pieces, but not as much evidence.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Really great, you've got really great questions.
Any additional questions from the commission?
I see Commissioner Speck.
Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as was just pointed out, a lot of these, most of these projects are developer driven, which are heavily um, come down to dollar, come down to dollars. And, you know, in in having worked with a number of developers, you know, it all, in terms of how the performance stacks out, it usually comes down to the number of units they can get in there. When you're talking accessibility, they're larger units because of mobility needs. Um, I like the idea of say, of adding bonus, um, bonuses to these cuz then that gives the developer an opportunity to kind of keep their unit counts up and maybe have an incentive to um, build some of these into the project, projects. I had a real hard time understanding why there, and maybe it's just project size alone because, you know, uh, accessibility is code mandated, so they have to be built in there. And I don't know if it's because we have a building stock that is outdated and it's not newer stuff or um, or it's some other consideration. If people were intentionally building projects under a certain size to avoid having to um, include that type of, of those types of units. The um, I was gonna say mandating it, I think, doesn't seem like the right way to go cuz I think it inevitably ends up discouraging some people from from developing uh, those projects. So and and the other thing with this is in terms of for mandating is um, while these, there, this is recognizing a shortage of of accessible units, it doesn't really quantify what level of accessibility we're talking about here. And there's, you know, there's a big difference between uh, uh, you know, full on accessibility. Like today, the turning radiuses for a restroom, for a restroom can be our six foot in diameter. And if there's a requirement of doing wall hung toilets versus floor mounted toilets, and those are the type of things where the real dollars come into uh, consideration is hanging devices for mounting type stuff and then plumbing considerations.
Um, the one thing that I do wanna address, I, great points, I wrote them all down, they're all going into the. The one thing I do wanna address is um, in terms of there being uh, building code requirements for them. Building code requires two percent of the units and our foreseeable housing need is that it's eleven percent of the housing unit, twelve percent of the housing units that we need um, have, will need to be accessible. So there's a big disconnect um, between those two numbers. Yes, we are definitely getting more than we were because codes did not require that before. But it's about, one, we're playing catch up and two, there as our population gets older and as other things are changing, we are needing more, more and more accessible housing. So, uh, but yes, the rest of it, um, I absolutely wrote that down and it will be passed on.
Great, thank you for the responses.
Thanks, Commissioner Speck. Any additional commission questions? I have a kind of a statement more than a question for Steph Hickson. I'm kind of of the agreement that incentives seem like they would be a more constructive way to go for builders. The questions I have are, you know, it comes down to numbers. How, we need to find out, I believe, as a city, how many accessible units we need, what the need is, and then create an incentive program around that. Do we have better numbers as far as the need for accessibility?
We're working on it.
Uh, Chair, I'll extend some of that really briefly. Uh, there's not great data uh, on this. Um, in the housing needs analysis, we just kind of looked at what the we heard from, first of all, we heard from public engagement that there's just a great shortage. Um, folks were just having a really tough time. Uh, and then we looked at the projected, uh, I think the census had like twelve percent, which is probably an underestimation of the disabled population. We, we just looked at our growth, not the whole base, um, and said like, well, let's try to, let's try to I guess, play catch up or like, you know, see if we can generate more units than the growth we have coming up. Uh, so there's, there's no great uh, perfect data that we're gonna get about the number. Um, so we're just really trying to figure out, can we get a little bit more than we have been? Uh, or more than is required and like, how could we possibly uh, encourage that?
Okay, thanks, Steph Martin.
I actually have a question for the commission as well. In terms of incentives, generally, the incentives that we have given have been building, uh, increased building height or um, increased floor ratio or decreased parking requirements. Um, we have no minimum parking anymore. Um, we are going away from, i- if this paradigm happens, we're going away from having building height. Um, and we're increasing the floor ratio ratios a lot already. Um, so incentives would be um, much easier for me to be able to write if I had any idea what we still have in our pocket. Um, so if you have any ideas about what we have in our pocket, that'd be great. And of course, there are, eh, there are non-code related incentives that would not be in our realm that um, could come from other parts of the city and other places.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just follow up on that again, Anna Soltansky, Plain Divis manager. Um, uh, to say that a lot of incentives, for example, many um, programs for inclusionary housing um, that are paired with incentives, in, they basically use a restriction on something that the market wants to build in order to incentivize something that the market doesn't want to include um, or that is costly to be included. Um, the problem with that is that if part of what, what our goal is as a city um, is to create more housing, create more space for jobs, create vibrant dense areas that will be um, you know, friendly and vibrant and walkable, um, we're kind of fighting against ourselves um, by restricting something that we kind of want already in order to try to get something else that we want. Um, so that's one of the problems with using um, kind of uh, doling out um, uh, uh, development allowances in order to get something, get developers doing they wouldn't do otherwise. Which kind of brings us to incentive programs are kind of ultimately about money. Um, and um, the, the toolkit there, um, lots of, lots of different programs, use different types of money, right? Uh, some kind of tax abatement or um, or grants or loans or discounts or something like that. But it does all kind of come down to money. Um, we are in a tight budget environment now, we expect to be going into the future. Um, so, so it's, it's, it's a challenging conversation. Um, and whenever we have um, a um, something to um, uh, to consider including in, in the requirements for development in order to meet um, community policy goals, meet community needs, um, most of those things cost money one way or another. And the question is really, how do we approach um, achieving those goals? Um, zoning uh, requirements that are mandated um, is one way to do that. Um, finding a way to budget for incentives that kind of come down to money in the city budget and tax revenue is another way to do that. Um, but it's a, that's, in in my opinion, that is, that is kind of like the high level profile of that conversation. Um, so there are a lot of different thoughts and opinions about what the effective, what the most effective way is or the fair way to approach um, getting community wide outcomes through development. Um, but this is certainly not the only topic that brings up the question, so it is a little, it's a little bit thorny.
Thanks, Steph. Slaphead speak. Staff, are there any additional points or are we getting close to the end or?
We're basically at the end. So um, any other questions or comments? Uh, we went through that. So the project timeframe, it's a really short project. Um, normally, long range planning projects are like a year, year and a half, two years. Um, if it's really big, even longer. This one is not. Um, we are, as Brian said, we need to get um, approvable code by um, me. me. And, uh, in order to do that, we have to really just keep going and flowing. Um, we're talking to you right now. Um, there's also a survey out, um, which is more of a visual preference of it. It's more of, uh, how you want that was grand flaws to look and what's really important to you about open space, those kinds of questions. Um, we also have a community meeting. You are all invited to our community meeting. Also, please let your networks know. Um, it will be fun. It starts with food. It has, um, building and play involved in it. Um, and there is Spanish language translation, um, and one other language to be determined by who asks us for it. Um, and we will, uh, we will be looking at the things that make places feel like home, um, to make sure that we are not getting rid of any of those, getting to those questions, uh, Commissioner McCann had about livability. We really want to make sure that if we are getting new areas and we're designing new areas, that livability is part of that. Um, so I believe that that was it. So, thank you, everybody. Um, if you have any other questions, comments for me right now, let me know. If not, um, you have, I believe, uh, all of my contact information. So, um, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Staff Hickson. Commission, any additional questions for Staff Hickson?
Thanks so much.
It doesn't look like it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steph Martin. Now is the time for public comments on the Design Walkability Places Project. With those viewing via Zoom webinar, please communicate by using the raise hand feature in your Zoom menu bar. If calling in, press nine to alert the chair that you would like to speak. Not seeing any questions from the public. Staff has stated that we do not have any public comment. So now we are on the second agenda item, which is planning commission training.
Good evening, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager. Um, I am joined in this by Assistant City Attorney, Robin McIntyre. And Robin is a familiar face to the returning commissioners, but this is her first opportunity to meet the incoming commissioners, um, because, uh, uh, she was unable to join our orientation in December. So, the approach we're gonna take to the training tonight, um, is to, um, have Robin walk through some of the things that were shared in that orientation for new planning commissioners as a reinforcement for those new commissioners, but also as a refresher for our returning planning commissioners. I have a PowerPoint that I'm going to share. Um, and once Robin walks through some of, um, some of those, uh, nuts and bolts, uh, important, uh, legal, uh, considerations for the whole commission, then we get to have an open ended conversation about, um, uh, some different approaches to training for planning and commission for the rest of the year, topics that are most of interest to you, um, and that would be the most helpful. So, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
While Anna's sharing her screen, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Robin McIntyre. I'm an Assistant City Attorney. And, um, uh, you are the, I'm the attorney you're gonna see most often for those planning commissioners that are new. We have, uh, seven attorneys at the city attorney's office, but I'm the one that is, uh, has the expertise in land use. Occasionally, you might see Megan Thornton if she's covering for me. She's our, um, interim city attorney. She also has a land use background, but it's really the, the two of us that are, that have the land use focus. So, you'll see mostly me at your planning commission meetings. And, um, if you have, you know, questions about anything that we go over today, you can feel free to reach out to me by email. Um, I'll make sure that, um, Anna shares that, that information with you. So, with that, uh, we will go ahead and get started. This, I wanna say this is, um, actually, and I don't know, I sent this to Anna. She might've made, she might've made the correction in my, in my slides, but this is, this is basically the training that I do for the city councilors. So, sometimes it might say council is the decision maker or council does this. Just, just know that that means planning commissioner. So...
Okay. I, I don't know that I caught those problems, Robin, if they actually exist, but, um, but that's, I think that's a good enough warning for our sophisticated audience here. And Robin, just let me know. I'll go ahead and advance the slides for you when you're ready.
Okay, I'm ready. Go ahead. Okay, so I really wanna touch on a couple of things that, um, the, the chief, like, decision making that you do as planning commissioners can be divided into two, two categories. There are legislative, um, decisions and quasi judicial decisions. There's two types of hearings and they, they are different and, and it matters. So, for the legislative hearings, you are in a lawmaking role. You're legislators. You're applying policy on a wide level throughout the city or through, or through large areas of the community. Um, for quasi judicial hearings, you are acting as a decision maker over something that is very discreet. It's a discrete application for one property or a small number of properties. Um, a decision is required and the process is very important. Um, and we'll go, go into, oh, here I said, decision is required and must comply with standards and criteria. And I know, without having been there, but I do know that Anna probably went over that with you in detail in her training, that the decisions have to be based on the criteria that are in the code. So, when you're making this, reviewing these, um, quasi judicial applications, it's, it's imperative that you focus on the criteria, um, as you review those. So, next slide, Anna, please.
Hang on. I thought I had it nailed down. Nope. Sorry, guys. I managed to, oh, there we go. I managed to advance one slide and then somehow lost the power too. But there you go.
Okay. So, yeah, I kinda touched on this a little bit, but key components of the legis, of a legislative, um, process legislative decision are gonna, are, you're gonna see these more as amendments to the comprehensive plan or amendments to the zoning map or development code. With that said, I do have to say that sometimes you're gonna have amendments to the zoning, um, uh, map or code that might be, uh, quasi judicial. Again, there, there are multiple factors that go into it. Primarily is, is the, the number of applicants, the size of the property. Like, if you're talking about a discrete property and a single applicant, that's gonna be a quasi judicial, uh, application, even if it's a zoning map change. So, I, you know, just kind of, these are generally, this is generally when you will see a legislative, um, hearing and legislative application is when it's amendments to comprehensive plan, zoning map on a larger scale, uh, development code that applies citywide or communitywide. Um, I'm not done yet. Anna, go back.
Sorry.
A really important thing with legislative hearings that differentiates them from quasi judicial hearings is that, um, you're allowed to have contact with people before the hearing. With quasi judicial hearings, these ex parte contacts are really discouraged, but for, for legislative, you're encouraged and probably, you know, expected to, to get out there and connect with the community to find out what they think about these proposals. Uh, however, a conflict of interest is still, it, that is still, um, that, that is still a potential reason to be recused from a legislative project. So, even though you can talk to people and ex parte is okay, you still cannot have a conflict of interest. That's an actual conflict. If you have a potential conflict of interest, you'll just wanna disclose that, but you can still participate. And again, with legislative, um, projects, no decision is, is required. Uh, we usually do have a decision, but it's not required by law. Okay.
And, and, and in that, so I just gonna chime in real quick. For legislative land use applications, the role of planning commission is to make a recommendation to city council, who are the decision makers for that legislative, um, legislative land use application.
Okay, quasi judicial hearings. Um, this is the one where you're, you're putting on your, your judge hat and you're, you're acting as a judge and fairness is very important. Procedure is very important. Uh, the hearing procedure is prescribed by statute and, um, it has the same key elements that you might see in like a, in a, in a hearing or a trial where, uh, one party bears the burden of proof and in land use cases, it's the applicant. The process is designed for, for fairness and due process. And it's key that as decision makers, that you are unbiased. And, um, next slide, Anna, and I'll go over how a lot of this is accomplished in the next slide. So, first, there is a pre-hearing statement that's required for all, uh, quasi judicial hearings. You guys will get to the point where you will have it memorized. Um, it describes the hearing process and what's required for, for, um, applicant and people participating to preserve their arguments for appeal. We will also poll the decision makers. We'll poll all the commissioners for whether you have bias, conflict, ex parte contacts. And when, and, and when we do, and, and you'll, you'll start to get used to the, this procedure and, and get a feel for, um, for what constitutes just what, what you need to disclose. But in general, for, and I actually will talk about ex parte contacts in the next slide, actually. So, let me just go on to the public hearing portion. So, first it'll start with a pre-hearing statement. Then the public hearing portion has the same structure. It's gonna start with the staff report. The applicant who bears the burden of proof will make their presentation, will get public testimony for, against, and neither for or against. And then the applicant has an opportunity for rebuttal, again, because the applicant bears the burden of proof. Then, um, the commission will, will close the hearing and deliberate towards a decision. Okay, next slide. Okay, so ex parte contact, uh, this is gonna come up a lot and you guys, and you really need to be, the new commissioners be really, um, uh, you know, aware of this. Commissioner Holmes, did you have a question?
Hmm, so, just the one question I had is, is the deliberation, like, in front of everybody publicly, or is it like off, like, a side room?
No, it is, the deliberation is in public. Uh, what happens after the hearing is closed is, uh, the chair will just take a poll of the commissioners and generally how you want to proceed. And then somebody will make a motion, one of the commissioners will make a motion, and you will discuss and deliberate, uh, at that time in the public meeting. And the decision you make is gonna be in the public meeting. So, yep, it's all public. Okay, uh, ex parte contact. This is something that, uh, you need to be very aware of because this, this will happen, especially in, in, you know, very controversial, um, cases. It's, it's a, it's a pre-hearing contact with any party. So, it might be the applicant. It might be somebody who's opposed to the application. They might be somebody who, you know, you already know that's a, that's a party and they might catch you in the grocery store, or they might send you an email, uh, before the hearing. That's an ex parte contact. It doesn't necessarily mean you can't participate, but you do need to disclose it at the hearing. I'm, I generally like to discourage you from having ex parte contacts if people reach out to you. You know, I would recommend that you tell them that this is a matter that's coming before the planning commission and I, and I don't wanna talk about it. You come to the hearing and testify the hearing, because that way everybody can hear what that person has to say. So, um, ex parte contacts also include a site visit after the application is filed. So, if you do go to the site, you do need to disclose that. That's perfectly fine. We encourage you to go out to the site, but we just want you to disclose that you, that you visited the site. And usually it would be good to say, like, what you observed. In general, it would be something like, I did visit the site, but I didn't see anything that wasn't already in the record or, you know, it, cause the record will include a description of the property and so on and so forth. So, um, so, yeah, so that's allowed and encouraged, but again, you just need to disclose it.
I would, yeah, go on. Sorry, I just wanted to, to elaborate a little bit on one of the things you said, which is that, which is that the, the really important thing here is that the information that's used in order to decide a land use application needs to be in the record. So, the record includes all the application materials, all the written and verbal testimony, the meeting itself and those deliberations. Um, so, the point of sharing information of a site visit or other ex parte contact is that that information shouldn't be just for, for you. That, and, and information that you're drawing on to make a decision needs to be shared. Um, and so for a site visit, for example, um, let's say you did a site visit and you noticed like, oh, you know, that site had, um, this really big tree that I didn't know was there and that made me think about how it relates to the application. Or you notice something about maybe the, uh, the, the way the sidewalk works with the traffic pattern. Um, those are the kinds of things where if there's something that's surprising or that you learned from that site visit, as Robin said, that's different or in addition to what was in those materials in the application, then that would be exactly the kind of information that you would then share as, as part of that disclosure of the site visit, so that it's on the record and so that all the commissioners and the applicant, um, are aware of that, of that information as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, because also sometimes you might visit a site during an unusual circumstance. Like, maybe you visit a site and they happen to be, that happened to be the day they're having a, you know, graduation party for, you know, their kid and there's tons of cars parked on the site. And, you know, i- it's important to disclose that, because then the applicant has the opportunity also to clarify, like, what you saw. Like, that, we don't typically have that many cars parked on the site. We had a party that day or, or something to that effect. So, it gives the parties an opportunity to also question, uh, what you saw. So, um, what to do if there is an ex parte contact? Well, first and foremost is disclose the nature of the contact and a summary of what was learned. Um, the ex parte contact is not necessarily an error, but failure to disclose it is. So, just when in doubt, disclose the contact. Commissioner Holmes, did you have a question?
Yes, I just was curious. Is there ever a re, time or a reason that you would want to, that, or a way to provide that information back to our group or in some way ahead of time? Or is it always just in that roll call, like, that's where you would say it?
So, if you have a question about whether something qualifies as an ex parte contact, you can always contact me or Anna, planning staff, ahead of time and we can let you know whether that was an ex parte contact. Cause sometimes it's, it's not a party, maybe, or maybe you talked to this person years ago, well, before they filed the application. You know, so there are, there are different issues whether it may, may or may not qualify as an ex parte contact. We will poll you at the, at the hearing. That's part of the pre-hearing statement. And, um, we have no idea who might, who might question or, or challenge the contact. That's just comes out as part of the hearing process. So, um, but, you know...
I will say that, um, we do encourage commissioners to reach out to staff if they have any concerns or questions about the application. And I can certainly imagine a situation where maybe you get the packet a week in advance, you make a site visit on Saturday morning, and that raises a question for you. Um, I would encourage you to reach out to staff, um, about that question or concern, because staff, that may prompt staff then to provide additional information or respond in some way, um, in addition to then discussing whether that's an ex parte contact that you would then need to disclose during, um, during the planning commission meeting.
Okay, and as I mentioned, interested parties are offered the opportunity to object or ask you questions about your ex parte contact. So, you can expect that that might happen, uh, as part of the procedure. And, um, and again, just because you had an ex parte contact doesn't mean you're prohibited from participating or deliberating in the decision. The most important thing is to disclose it. Okay, next slide, Anna. Okay, conflicts of interest. This can get very tricky. Uh, there are two types of conflicts of interest. There's an actual and potential. For a potential conflict of interest, uh, you can still participate in the, in the, in the proceeding. For an act, actual conflict of interest, you must disclose that conflict and, and refrain from participating. You have to recuse yourself unless your vote is needed for a quorum. Uh, the, I've listed the elements of what an actual conflict of interest is. And, and basically, it's when you have a financial gain or a financial detriment from, from the action. And that includes you, uh, your relatives or any business, uh, which you're, um, a part of. So, um, and it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean a business where you just happen to work for someplace and there, you know, maybe you work for Nike and Nike is a, is applying for something, but, but you're not, you don't have a pecuniary interest. You don't have a, you're not gonna get, have a financial gain from whether or not, you know, the parking lot is expanded. So, that, that's an example of one where, you know, your business interest doesn't, doesn't rise to the level of conflict. But if you are a shareholder for the business, you're a part owner for the business that is coming into apply, that's different. The thing with conflicts of interest, I'm always happy there, sometimes they're very fact, fact specific. The thing with conflicts of interest, I'm always happy there sometimes are very fact fact specific. And I'm always happy to um answer any questions if something comes up and you think you may have a conflict of interest. You're not sure whether it's actual or potential. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
I would also add that because we actually work hard uh to include peoples whose professions are related to land use and planning and have connections to the city of Beaverton. Um, it's not unusual at all for there to be a conflict of interest um of a commissioner on a particular um on a particular agenda item. Um, it's it's not a bad thing. It kinda comes with the territory. The really important thing is that you make sure to identify it, um uh disclose it and recuse yourself if appropriate.
Okay, next slide. And this this is the definition from the statute uh for potential, which um Anna skipped over, so maybe I need to move faster. Uh anyway, the difference i- between actual and potential is that actual is you would have that financial gain or detriment and potential is you could, you could have it. So potential conflict of interest, you still need to disclose it, but you you can still participate. Okay, now next official, next slide. Bias. Okay, well bias is prejudice or prejudgment to the degree that you're incapable of making an objective decision. So you know, we all have bias, we all have some bias, that's okay. But when it rises to the level where you just cannot make an objective decision, you just are so opposed to certain thing that uh no matter what facts become come before you in the hearing, your mind is made up, then that is that is a bias and you should recuse yourself if you can't make an objective decision.
Um, I also just wanna chime in here and say that a- as Robin said, like we all have biases, right? Like it's part of being human um and being self-aware of those is something that is is important. Um, we have had planning commissioners recuse themselves because of bias. Um, again, it's not a, it's not a bad thing to have strong feelings about something. Um, but in some cases, um a commissioner, it is appropriate for a commissioner to say, you know what? I I'm not gonna be able to um to be objective um in in a decision-making capacity for this particular uh for this particular topic. Um, so I'm going to, I'm going to recuse myself and step away. And and that that's happened because of things that will affect a neighborhood or or affect a cause or um or or a position that a commissioner has particularly strong feelings about. It's not super common, um but I just wanna just let you know that it's like, it's still normal, right? It's still normal to have bias and and reflecting on and discussing if necessary with myself or with Robin. If you if you think that potentially something could be a bias that that maybe would be appropriate for you to recuse yourself, um that's something that's totally fine. No judgment from us. Um, we just wanna make sure that you're aware aware of this and you know that it's part of part of your role of planning commissioner is understanding and beware, being aware and responding appropriately when you may have experted contact, conflict of interest, or or bias um in relationship to one of the agenda items that Planning Commission um is reviewing.
I think this might be the end of of my slides.
Yeah, it is. And you know, the only, the only, so actually I'll pause and see if anyone has any further questions of Robin specifically. What we'll talk about next is kind of future training and and talking together about how that might work, but um folks might have more general questions for Robin, so I wanna leave some time for that if necessary.
Just going back to, I was looking at the script and it asks the question like, expertise and is bias in that same?
There isn't a a cue that is prompting um bias. Um, that would be something that you would need to need to identify on your own.
Would you say it during that time?
Uh, what I imagine would happen is it would be similar to a conflict of interest where um I imagine if it were potential bias that you would um let myself or Robin know. Um, and when that particular agenda item came up, um you would just say, um, I'm going to recuse myself um because of um because I do not believe I can be an objective participant in the decision-making for this particular topic.
Okay, and then if there's like two topics that day, you'll go through it twice?
Uh, exactly. So the questions about expertise contact and conflict of interest, they're part of the script for every single land use hearing. And we're actually required to um specifically address those topics separately for each each individual hearing.
Okay.
Commissioner McCann, did you have a question?
Uh, that is completely not not really related to ex parte contact. Um, so you you mentioned just sort of how the whole script works and how after we go through the presentations, there's essentially a section that says now we're gonna poll the commissioners on your thoughts on the application. Um, I'm curious if that particular sentence, that language is required because I think my experience so far on the commission is that it tends to lead us all to say which way we are going to vote and then it's kind of done. And there's not a lot, like there's not a lot of discussion. And um I don't know if that language is required or if there's a way to modify it to kind of maybe encourage a little more conversation and exchange before we make our decision.
I don't, I don't know, Robin. I I I maybe you have.
It's not required under state law. I don't, I would wanna check, d- double check the planning commissioners by, planning commission bylaws that the city has adopted. Uh, I I've actually never seen it done that way in my other, in my other uh work with other jurisdictions. But i- if I understand correctly, though, it sounds like Commissioner McCann, you're you're wanting more opportunity to dis- to have a discussion before.
No, it's it's after.
Okay, okay.
Like before, so it's, we, right, so it's before the motion gets made, but after all the presentation to maybe talk through like, okay, that was great. You know, I think it meets criteria, but I have a question about this. Instead, just the way it's phrased and maybe the way that we behave, and this is sort of learned as you join the commission, you sort of pick up on other people's behavior. What we end up doing is saying, well, I feel like it meets the criteria and therefore I think it's approvable. And that's kind of like it it's sort of becomes sort of an unofficial vote instead of a discussion. And I think it's made worse by Zoom. So probably like, um, oh, like it makes it harder to have that kind of conversational exchange.
I would say the conversational exchange, the appropriate time to do that would be during the the questions of staff. Because you can ask staff questions, you can, you can talk further about the issues that um you still want to dig into more, get more, you know, information on. Um, as far as when you're, you know, the deliberation part where you're discussing amongst yourselves together, I that is most appropriate after a, after a motion is made. And then you'll ask for discussion on the motion. And that's the point where you can, you can talk, you know, amongst yourselves about you know, your feelings on on that particular motion on the table.
Okay, so maybe we just need to be better about discussing.
Mm-hmm.
Robin, I'm, I'm curious though, I'm curious though. No, I just, I guess my question is that um typically, you know, when we go, we go through the staff presentation, opportunity for questions, the applicant presentation, opportunity for questions, um testimony, um and then rebuttal from the applicant and then staff final comments. Uh, typically, the the framework has been, if I understand it correctly, is that it's really about the commission asking for more information rather than sharing their attitudes or opinions or assessments of what's been presented. And so I guess my question based on what you said, Robin, is do we want to see that sharing of thoughts and opinions by commission during that during that question period with staff?
Yes.
Um, we do want, okay, so, okay.
During that, during that would be the appropriate time.
Okay.
Because what's happening, and I hear what what Commissioner McCann is saying, is that we're basically polling the the commissioners for their decision ahead of them making the decision. And, yeah.
And I think, I think that's an influence rather than kind of letting people sort of settle into it. So I don't know, maybe the rather than say, do we have any questions of staff, it's like, do we have any questions of staff or further discussion? I know, or something like, I don't know if there's a way to rephrase that to just sort of prompt the group to to feel open, to to have more of a a conversation about what we've just heard or what we what we wanna understand rather than feel like I can only ask a question that I feel like this staff member could answer.
Mm-hmm, yeah. No, that's a good point. I would just wanna check um the planning commission bylaws to make sure that's not a a required part in the but even if it is a required part, I don't know if it's really meant for polling necessarily.
Right, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, that had nothing to do with ex parte contacts, but you said something earlier that made me think of it, so.
No, that's, that's great to hear, but um Chair Adams, you have your hand up. You're the chair, you don't have to raise your hand.
Well, I wanted to take my turn, and so I didn't want to interrupt. Um, my question is to Robin, uh is there a preferred way you would like the commissioners to reach out to? Do you prefer email over voicemail, or what do you prefer?
Email, phone, uh whatever. I um, I will, I I guess I can, Anna, if you wanna give me everybody's email addresses or I can send it, Anna can forward my contact information to you, whatever's easiest. Probably Anna, you can forward my contact information to them.
Yeah, I I think what what I'll probably do is have have um have Max forward um your contact information. I think everyone has my contact information already. And I just wanna remind folks that whenever you receive, uh when you get that packet um ahead of a meeting with the staff report, the staff member contact information is always on that staff report. So if you have a project-specific question or concern or comment, the first person you should contact would be that staff person cuz trust me, they know more about the project than I do uh in almost all situations. Um, but when you wanna reach out to um to Robin, then that's totally appropriate to to reach out to her directly and and we'll make sure that um that you get that contact information.
Excellent.
Okay. All right, if there aren't any more questions of Robin specifically, um, let's move on and I'm gonna actually stop sharing because this is a very simple question and we don't have to all look at the slide. Um, but we can have an open discussion about what kind of training topics would be of most interest to Planning Commission uh this year. Uh, I did send a short memo, or actually Mac sent a short memo that I wrote um yesterday, just kind of offering some suggestions about what some of those training topics could be. I also want to note that we can schedule trainings like this one during the regularly scheduled commission meetings. We can also hold trainings um outside, uh outside of the um the planning commission meetings. Um, public meetings law does require that a quorum of planning commissioners be, hold a notice meeting in public when there is deliberation on planning commission business. Um, but trainings actually, uh my understanding, Robin, you can correct me, um actually can be held um outside that public meeting context, um provided we are, uh you know, uh judicious about um what we discuss during those, during those trainings. But it allows for there to be a little bit of a more open-ended um interaction. Could be in person, it could be one or two commissioners are interested in say getting walked through portions of the development code. That might not work so great in a formal meeting context. So there are different ways that we can approach training. It can be, it can be during these meetings, it can be outside the meetings. Um, and it can cover a whole variety of topics. My primary, my primary, uh my priority would be to make sure that all the commissioners feel that they have the information and the understanding they need to fulfill the planning commission role. Um, and that um we certainly, on the city's side, recognize that there's a learning curve for new commissioners. We do not expect there to be a high level of comfort um immediately or even within the first few months of your planning commission service. Um, so we really do see this as a process. Um, and um and with that, I will just pause and I'm interested in hearing thoughts and requests and questions or ideas about the kinds of trainings that you would find interesting and worthwhile.
I'll start it off. I'd like to see the Oregon land use law history. I think that would be very interesting. As well as, you know, of course, recent changes. That to me is high priority on my my list of things I'd like to see. Any other commissioners have something they would like to see on the training?
Um, I would agree. I I think some, getting some context, I think can be helpful. Um, I think the look ahead also would be interesting if there's projects that are definitely on someone's radar just to start. Like this one is great, there, but there's so much information. And I know we have a very quick timeline, so it's also like if there are other ones like that, that or even, I don't, the, you guys referenced the transportation stuff.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking during during that work session, that presentation, realizing how many other bodies of work, um some in the past and some that are kind of concurrent came up in that presentation and realizing that um, uh, a number of you folks won't necessarily be familiar with those. So I was kind of taking some mental notes about things you might be interested in. Commissioner Lago, I see you have your, have your hand up.
Ah, yes, I I think that for me, one thing that would be really helpful is getting some sort of guidance on uh the best way to really digest a lot of the code, you know, uh s- uh all technical documents, you can't read them the same, you can't read them from beginning to end, yeah. So maybe getting something uh like what has worked for you in the past uh to help me kind of guide my own sort of self uh exploration of the code. Just cuz the uh the training is great, but sometimes it's a little overwhelming on my own to just dive in and start reading all this like legal uh text that I don't really have the context to fully grasp.
Yeah, yeah. I I I hear you and I just wanna note that even on, even for staff members, um I would never suggest that someone sit down and just read the code. I I'm sure that there are um a number of team members um that have had the intention of doing that and then um eventually give it up because it just doesn't work very well. Um, I would also note that it's not the commissioners, the commissioners, the commissioners aren't expected to be experts on the entire development code um by any means. Um, that's, that's definitely staff's responsibility to be the experts on the code, to provide interpretations and information. That said, I totally understand the desire to have at least some sense of orientation and familiarity with the code so that you have a context for understanding the specific approval criteria and rules that are going to be coming up in the course of your deliberation on land use applications. Um, so I think one way to handle that is just to um uh do a kind of Beaverton Development Code 101, Beaverton Comprehensive Plan 101. Depending on the interest among the commission overall, that could be something we do in a meeting with everyone, or it could be more of a one-on-one thing. So I I would kind of leave that to the the level of interest. Um, and I think doing even an hour's review could probably make you feel much more comfortable in navigating the document so that you feel like you could find answers to the questions you may have and have, again, that kind of context for some of the specifics that are going to come up um with items on the on the commission's agenda.
Thank you so much. That that sounds fantastic. Yeah, if other people are interested too, that would be great to hit as many people all at once.
I also, I don't mean, I don't know if it's sort of the, well, you could go online and find it yourself kind of a thing, but I think some of the um the recent ones that maybe have gone through, just as some of, to me, it's like that hands-on, like, this is how it happened, this is what we did, this is what, like, cuz it's.
You mean like a, a like recent land use applications that commission has reviewed? Oh, yeah, sure, like a, like case studies, kind of.
Yeah, cuz sometimes it's just like when you learn a computer program and you're like, but I haven't actually walked through it myself yet, so you can show me how to do it.
Sure.
But I haven't touched it yet, and so that would almost be kind of trying to like walk us through it. And again, that.
And so it's not abstract, so it's more kind of concrete. That makes sense.
Cuz I I think the document that you guys gave us ahead of time was I thought it was pretty easy to read, kind of laying the ground, kind of trying to explain the reasoning and then sort of I felt like it got to a point where it was like, okay, and this is the question, so that that was pretty, really helpful, but um, I think some of it too is just getting familiar with some of the maps and the neighborhoods and the, how you guys talk about them, cuz I mean, I've.
Yeah, so is, so is there a kind of like Beaverton geography overview that you might find helpful? I mean, it's, there's a difference between living in Beaverton and like going to the grocery store and go to the library and all that, and then actually looking at things from a policy perspective when you're thinking about the whole city and looking at these maps and stuff. So, okay, I'm gonna put Beaverton geography 101 down on there. I use 101 a lot, just handy shorthand.
Any other commissioner questions?
Are there any, are there any policy, um, presentations that the commission is interested in? Um, so this would be less about, oh, we're doing this particular project, cuz that I think we've already, we're already covering. Um, but more, is there a policy area that you're interested in and, um, and and would like to get a, an overview of, um, by the way, these requests can also come in later, you don't have to that this is not the last opportunity you have to ask for that, that type of, um, that type of, uh, agenda item or, or presentation or training. Um, but I just wanted to throw that, throw that out there, um, if that was something that would be of interest.
Housing policy would definitely be of interest for me.
My honest answer is I don't know how to answer it, cuz I don't, I, it's like I, I'm having such a hard time grasping, like, what is that? I don't even know what to ask.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah. Um, so I think, I think then Commissioner Holmes, what I would say is like, just, just remember that that's an, that's an offer that's open. Um, and you can, you can ask for more information, um, and ask about, uh, uh, an interest in that history or, or the context of particular, um, city goals or policies. Um, and we can, we can, we can cover those as, as we need to. Okay.
Anna, another one that came up with me is, um, does the city have any kind of policy in encouraging, you know, mental health facilities?
So, so this, the health stuff from a public policy perspective is actually really more the purview of the county. Um, so while it's not that it's not of interest to the city, the county is really the service provider and main policy actor when it comes to mental health stuff. Um, what I would mention though is that the city has, um, uh, spent some time and made a priority some, um, service provision for, related to homeless shelters. Um, and in fact, just opened the city's first, um, year-round permanent homeless shelter, which is a, a huge deal, it's really amazing. Um, that would be something, that's definitely, um, uh, a new thing for the city and that was done actually in quite close coordination with the county and with Metro as well. Um, so that's kind of how we'd frame that, but, um, uh, there isn't a lot in terms of kind of, um, major policy on the part of the city simply because the city is not a health provider in the way that the county is. Robin, would you add anything to that?
Yeah, I would say, that, that's true, that's really, it's not one of the city's core services. Though, you know, for certain things, we, we get involved because we have an interest in it, but it's not, it's not one of our core services.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, granted, providing housing directly is also not a core service of the city. Um, so that kind of policy priority around housing, um, is something that is, um, it's not completely new to the city, but I would say that it may not have been identified as a particular interest or priority of the city fifteen or twenty years ago. Um, so, you know, these things, these things aren't, certainly aren't, aren't cast in stone.
I was, what I was referring to is I've, I've had the, um, a chance to go down and tour Wilsonville. And Wilsonville has facilities set up for the mentally ill down there, that I think is, it's pretty cool how to incorporate them into the community. And I was just wondering if on a city level we have that, it sounds like maybe that's the county that would handle that.
Well, that's interesting, in Wilsonville, there's of course the legacy of the old public, um, public mental health hospital that was, um, decommissioned and then a major development, um, that was master planned, was built on that land. Um, which is very fascinating history, it sounds like you may have, you may have gotten some of that story. And part of, part of that, part of the legacy of that was incorporating, um, some, um, a kind of assisted living, small scale, I think this is living facilities basically in that residential neighborhood. Um, it's been really interesting, the story of how that was integrated, how that was done, I think they did a really amazing job pulling that off.
I do too, I do too.
All right, well, I'm not hearing a lot of other ideas and requests now, which is totally fine, it's actually getting a little bit late. Um, so what I would just say is that I'm gonna take these notes and I'm going to kind of draft up um, an approach to kind of spreading these out aro- along the schedule. Um, to, you know, make sure we're not overloading agendas, um, and also making sure that staff can prepare materials to make them, um, good, good and useful trainings, but my goal will be to kind of spread these out in the year. Um, and as I said before, I'm ver- I'm very much open to additional requests. Um, if they pop into your head or if questions, this may be more likely, if questions come up um, as you're reviewing, um, projects or land use applications that come across the agenda, you may, you may think to yourself, you know, I really would, would be interested in having more of a policy context on this. It's, it's provoked some interest that's brought us into this application, so. The door's open.
Awesome.
All right, thank you so much, all of you.
With that, we are now adjourned at eight forty-two PM.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night.
Thanks a lot.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.